Good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Rancho Mirage City Council meeting for Thursday, December 20, 2018. The council also serves as a library and observatory board, the housing authority board, and the city council representing redevelopment successor agency. So let's begin with a flag salute led by Councilman Dana Hobart.
Ready? Begin.
I would like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indigenous, free, liberty, and justice for all.
The vocal cords are still in good shape. Okay, with next, Kristi, would you do roll call, please?
Certainly. Councilmember Hobart?
Here.
Councilmember Townsend?
Here.
Councilmember Weil?
Here.
Mayor Protem Smotrich?
Here.
And Mayor Kite?
Here. Thank you. Today, I have the pleasure of introducing the new executive director of the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce. Katie, would you like to come forward and give your little history and what we have to look forward working with you?
Absolutely.
Katie Stice.
Yes, hello. It's a beautiful day in Rancho Mirage.
It's always a beautiful day in Rancho Mirage.
Thank you so much for having me to the council and the staff that's here today. My history with Rancho Mirage is a great one, and so I want to tell you a little bit about that if you haven't heard it already. I actually started my chamber career as an ambassador at the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce in 2003 when I worked at the Children's Discovery Museum as their operational director for a number of years. In 2001, I believe I received a scholarship from the Rancho Mirage Chamber for Leadership Coachella Valley in its inaugural year that it was offered. That was 2001, so 18 years ago. It's probably time for me to take that course again, but I have a long great history with Rancho Mirage, and it's a pleasure to serve here. There are two designations that I want you to know about in my history, just so that you know my level of dedication to this industry. And that is, I have an ACE and an IOM after my name. The ACE is for Accredited Chamber Executive, and I received that after five years of training with the Western Association of Chamber Executives. And IOM is from the U.S. Chamber of Commerce Institute for Organizational Management, which is a four-year program. And so those two things really are going to propel me and this chamber and this business community to a whole other level, and we're thrilled to work with the city of Rancho Mirage. Just a quick update on what's happened recently. It's only been two weeks, and we've had several meetings already with the city, lots of business owners as well. We received five new members so far. We had a great holiday party that was hosted by Jim at Perch with a wonderful turnout. Lots of new faces coming out, so I hear. We have the Rammies, of course, coming up on January 28th. We hope to see everyone there. We'll have you there also presenting awards and doing a welcome as well. Our city guide was published. I'm sure that you all saw that. An incredible publication that we're really proud to offer, and it's unique to this chamber. So other chambers might have directories that they send out, but they don't go to all of the residents, and so it's a very special piece. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I look forward to working with you. I've been setting up lunch dates with everyone, and I continue, hope to continue to have these lunch meetings with everyone individually, just so that I know your ideas and your thoughts about the chamber moving ahead, and that's me. Yeah.
Lots of luck to you, and I think you're bringing a lot of intensity to the job and look forward to working with you. Jim, did you have anything to say?
Thank you, sir. As the chairman of the board of the Rancho Mirage Chamber of Commerce, I'd like to wish each and every one of you a joyous holiday season and a healthy, prosperous 2019. And I cannot tell you how lucky we are to have brought Katie on board. Her, as you said, her intensity, her energy, and the background that she brings to us is very, very special, and staff has been fantastic in working with us to align our philosophies and to... And I'll tell you right now, the board has never been more engaged than it is right now, and we fully expect that Katie's leadership and experience and depth of knowledge in the industry, as she puts it, will take us exactly where we need to go. So thank you all, one and all, while we got on our feet and we're running forward, and we appreciate your forbearance while we do so.
You know what? We appreciate you guys, too, and that board is wonderful in the history. You'll do a great job because you've got a good board beneath you there. Take care and Merry Christmas.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks for being here today.
And congratulations. The other evening at your holiday party, I thought the turnout was great, the reception for you, Katie. A lot of people were there to welcome you. Of course, Jim is notorious as being the host with the mostest. There's no question about it. When they see that Perch is hosting something, they line up. But truly, the reception was terrific, and I think it's the start of a terrific season. So we welcome you and look forward to a lot of success.
Thank you. I think you saw something really unique where a lot of folks did come out in celebration of me, which is a little bit uncomfortable for me, but I can say I'm a product of this community through the scholarships and the participation, and so it was a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now going to move on to the non-agenda public comments, and this is an opportunity for the public to speak on issues that are not on the agenda, and we try and keep it around three minutes. So if you filled out a yellow form, this will be the speaker form, and if you haven't filled one out, please fill it out and give it to Kristi. So the first person on the list today is Susan Ragsdale.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. My address is 42536 Rancho Mirage Lane. I like the expression "bloom where you're planted." I'm pleased to say I'm planted here in a lovely apartment at Whispering Waters in Magnesia Falls Cove. From the bottom of my heart, thank you to the Housing Authority because of the city's affordable senior housing, I'm saved. I've prepared two prints for each council member. One is my graphic arts resume, and the other is a fine art chiclay print of 15 thumbnail-sized images from my collection Sacred Art Works. I'm here to offer my graphic design services to the city for projects such as posters, banners, ads, invitations, and photography. I have a portfolio and would be happy to present my work to anyone interested, so please don't hesitate to call me if needed. On May, in May 2011, shortly after my mother passed away, I moved from our three-bedroom rental home in South Palm Desert into a 300-square-foot apartment on Indian Trail. You know the place. It's a mid-century modern seven-unit former motel with kitchenettes directly across from the entrance to Parkview Villas. Until November 2015, this is where I lived while I worked as a caregiver. I was grief-stricken and unhappy with the way I was earning a living. However, in my tiny apartment with my iMac, I found comfort in studying Buddhism and creating art. I spent most of my time off making sacred artworks and ended up with approximately 800 of these images. Many of them are large and could be printed on a seven-foot-wide canvas. Sacred artworks are designed to reflect and inspire love, peace, happiness, and meditation. For this presentation today, I printed 15 different images on 11-by-14 fine art bright white paper. As you can see on the bottom right of the thumbnails print, I created two artworks for the city of Rancho Mirage. I can design in any style required. In November 2019, I'd like to show some of my framed chiclay prints of sacred artworks at the Art Affair, so I called Mike, who's in charge of this event. I don't have a tent or panels or anything to present my work, so I'm wondering if the city might have an extra booth to loan out. For a local artist, is there some kind of sponsorship or grant to cover supplies such as prints? Or is there someplace where I can show my work? Directly after the public council meeting, I'd like to present this portfolio of 15 printed sacred artworks. It would take less than 10 minutes. Otherwise, I will leave it with the city clerk to show if you're interested. My request for help is not a quid pro quo regarding the offer to donate my services as a graphic designer. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for being here today. Next request is Alan Worthy.
Well, good afternoon and Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to all of you. I'm here to express my gratitude to all of you and for all of your support over the last few years. I've been away, as you know, and I just want to say thank you. I'm very grateful, and we can't wish each other a Happy New Year unless we plan to have one, and that's what we all need to do. We need to plan on just that and demand of our superiors, of people like you that have upheld the rule of law and your oath that everyone does the same. It's the only way we're going to get out of this, so I appreciate it greatly. Last night at the Palm Springs City Council meeting, after four hours, they finally came to the public comment, and I politely and firmly laid down the law. Okay? I don't want to go negative. I want to just be positive today, again, with my gratitude, but I did say enough is enough. And if these criminals that did what they did to Jo Pond and her family are indicted, I expect these people to be indicted. It's the identical story, and it does not make any of us look good anywhere for this to go on and on and on and not address it. I'm not sure I was worth the $3.5 million, but it was over a million, that's for damn sure. It's not okay, but what the point I'm making today is enough. And let's have a new year and a great new year, because this last one, if you can believe it, was one of the all-time worst. I think, what did the Queen say? Anus Hareblis in Atlanta. But I say that, too, not because of all of the tragedies that continued to befall my family and our closest friends, but I don't know what this is here tragically, here in Rancho Mirage and in the desert itself with the car accidents and the motorcycles. You know, we just have to know that it's not okay and drive safe and watch for those people who are walking, jogging, riding their bicycles. You know, it just has to stop. It's just a year of that and more in Atlanta, and I come back here and it's just, I see it. It's just terrible. So let's watch and pray that that's over in the new year, that everyone's paying attention behind the wheel. It's heartbreaking that anyone is killed here. It's endless in Atlanta. I mean, it's written up by the CDC. That's how bad it is. It's that horrible. So I've always said we'd had everything but a plane crash, and in the spring, we had that. So anyway, thank you. I'm very grateful to all of you. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Bill Reason. Bill?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and the audience. I'm here today to publicly congratulate you, the city, on having that wonderful Christmas show out at the park, at the amphitheater. It was wonderful. The big band and the four singers and dancers performed just magnificent. They played beautiful Christmas music for over an hour, and the best part was it was absolutely free to the public, thanks to the city. And on top of that, we had complimentary hot chocolate and cookies that went very well with a chilly evening that we had. So again, that was free. So this is very, very nice. My wife and I, plus probably a few hundred other people, enjoyed it immensely. It was a great, great program. And I would, I would think that if that same show was to be put on at the McCallum Theater, they would probably charge $50 or more per person to go, and here, the city provided it for free. So congratulations again, and I just want to say thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. I think we all agree with you. It was a great program, and the community really benefited from it. Is there anybody else who would like to speak today that has not submitted a yellow form? Okay, thank you very much. We'll close the non-agenda public comments and move on to the city council board member comments and begin with Councilmember Ted Weil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the holiday season upon us, stores are crowded, streets are busy, and the holiday cheer is strong. The Riverside County Sheriff's Department has once again made it their duty to spread holiday cheer to those in need through Shop with a Cop. This is one of my favorite events of the year. Shop with a Cop provides underserved families in our community with a unique opportunity to interact with local deputies on a personal level while shopping for gifts. Were it not for this event, many of the participating children would not receive much for the holidays. Some, nothing at all. The positive interaction is a great way to foster a positive relationship between the community and law enforcement. This year, I had the pleasure of participating in this fantastic event at the Walmart in Palm Desert. This is the eighth year that the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, alongside representatives from the Palm Desert Indian Wells and the Rancho Mirage stations, have hosted Shop with a Cop. $6,000 was allocated to this year's event, $3,500 donated by the three cities collectively, and $2,500 was granted by Walmart. Over 25 children and families from the area were chosen to participate based on recommendations received from local school administrators, counselors, and school resource officers. All the children and their siblings were able to spend up to $125 each. The remaining funds were spent on additional toys that have been handed out by officers in underserved neighborhoods. I sincerely enjoyed watching the positivity and kindness of our deputies brighten the holiday season for so many children. I want to thank each and every one of them for their time and efforts. Happy holidays to you and your family. And I must say that I've participated in this program now for a number of years, and when you go around with the families as they pick out various articles of clothing, when they try on shoes, it's just a remarkable transformation of the joy of the season. And when you go out to the car with them at the end of the morning and you put the various gifts in their car, it is if literally Santa was right there at that moment, and the officers that are there along with the families. I've said it before, if you don't have a tear in your eye after participating in this event, you don't have a heart. It's just so heartwarming and appealing, and I just thank law enforcement that's here today, everyone that participated. It's a terrific event. Thanks, and it's an honor to be part of it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ted. Councilwoman Smotrich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I do have a couple of comments to make because I would like to just take a few moments to sing the praises of some exciting events which took place in our wonderful city just over the last week. First of all, last week at our wonderful library, families throughout the Coachella Valley had the opportunity to decorate and take home a few beautiful gingerbread houses. As you can see on the screen, it was a great success with over 400 people working with candies, edible glitter, and frostings of all sorts. And with the help of our incredibly organized staff, who set up three separate supply stations in the back, beautiful creations were crafted, along with lots of finger licking and an occasional candy kiss or gumdrop popping into people's mouths, both for the kids and for the adults. So if you were not able to attend this time, perhaps you can put it on your calendar for the holiday season for next year. And on the screen, you can see some of the beautiful creations. The kids were so clever, and the parents enjoyed it just as much as the kids, and needless to say, I enjoyed it also. I made my own gingerbread house, something I always wanted to do and finally had the opportunity. So mine wasn't nearly as nice as everyone else's, but at least I had a great time doing it, and I can't wait for next year. Thank you. And secondly, and I also want to thank Bill for coming up and talking about our event at the amphitheater last week. It was last Saturday night, and the city put on, at our amphitheater, a lot of holiday cheer for the Second Annual Rancho Mirage Holiday Spectacular. Lemon Car Desert Theatricals presented a fabulous 1940-style Christmas. It was a show that included a nine-piece big band, four singers, vintage commercials, and shared letters from the boys overseas to their families. It was extremely touching and enjoyed, needless to say, by many, many people because approximately 800 people attended and enjoyed, as Bill said, the hot cocoa, the hot chocolate, and holiday cookies and candy canes, compliments of Santa's helpers. It was a wonderful evening with beautiful traditional holiday songs, and for all those who lived through the decades of the '40s, it was certainly reminiscent of the big band era with typical entertainment of a wartime radio show. Hearing radio commercials of those times brought back lots of memories, some sweet, some very bittersweet. But whatever the memories were, it was certainly an authentic reproduction of a bygone era and a festive and heartwarming evening for us all. Needless to say, I can't wait until next year's show. And then I would also like to share with you, and Sean will elaborate when I am finished. This is really for our hikers and all of our wannabe hikers. It's our newly updated Parks and Trails map. It is really great that our staff has worked diligently to make sure that every detail regarding recreational areas, brief descriptions of each trail, as well as amenities, are available on this map, and lots of other details are also included. As most of our seasonal hikers know, we've got some really unique parks and trails, and we want you to enjoy all of them. So staff has put together a convenient fold-up pocket map, which can be obtained at our City Hall counter, or you can simply download it and print the map from your home computer. The map and safe hiking tips can be found at www.ranchoorageca.gov. And just in case you were unaware, Rancho Mirage has over six miles of trails ranging from easy to moderate to steep. There are six different trails detailed on the map, and parking is available behind City Hall in the upper parking lot. So have a great time. Select the trail that suits your individual needs. Bring your friends, bring your relatives, and even bring your furry family members. But also, please remember to bring sufficient water, and please be considerate of other hikers by picking up after your pets. So if you're not a hiker, you can visit our beautiful Annette and Richard Block Cancer Survivors Park just east of City Hall, or our lovely Michael Wolfson Park, or our amazing Rancho Mirage Dog Park, all listed on our website, and of course, one of our finest, our Rancho Mirage Community Park and Amphitheater. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wish everyone a wonderful holiday, filled with good health and only fun things. And I would like to just mention one more thing before I pass it on to Isaiah, and perhaps our city manager can comment on it afterward, because last Sunday, as I was driving down Gerald Ford and Monterey at 12:07 at noon, the light signals were flickering red. I called Isaiah, and at 12:13, he emailed me back saying that Justin Ruberg was heading out to fix the problem, and by 12:54, the problem was fixed and everything was back to normal. So maybe you could address that just a bit?
Yeah, sure. It's, you know, thank you to our streets crew who keeps our streets and our signals operating. So in this case, we have staff that are on call in case we incur issues after hours when City Hall is closed, and they're extremely responsive, and it's just another benefit to the community how dedicated our staff is. So I called Justin Ruberg, and immediately, he responded to it and then reported back when the signal was back in operation. So from the time of reporting to it being fixed and resolved, we had less than an hour there that the signal was down, and it's just another reason why the city maintains control of its traffic signals.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And now on to Sean Smith.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There we go. So I just wanted to take a moment to briefly show everyone where you can download our new Parks and Trails map on the city's website. So if you go to www.ranchoorageca.gov, you will want to scroll down the screen to find Residents right in the middle. And if you scroll down on the right side of the screen, you will find Parks and Trails, which will take you directly to a PDF version of our new map that you can click on and download or print. It's that simple. There you have it.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Is that it?
That's it, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Iris. Thank you, everybody else on this side of the dais. Thank you, Isaiah. And to my left is Councilman Charles Townsend. Charlie, you'd like to say a few words?
Yes, I will, and I will dovetail what Iris was talking about with the Sunday event at the park last Saturday. Lemon Car Desert Theatricals partnered with the city of Rancho Mirage and put on a wildly successful big band Christmas holiday spectacular, as Iris said. They had over 800 people that attended it for the Christmas show. I would like to thank both Ray and Josh for the amazing production, and mention now two upcoming productions that will take place in our amphitheater early next year. In January, we will welcome Sinatra Forever. This concert is a tribute to the great Frank Sinatra, as presented by one of Las Vegas' premier singers and impersonators, Rick Machul. There will be two showings of Sinatra Forever, one on Saturday, January 12, and the other on Sunday, January 13, both starting at 6:00 p.m. Sinatra Forever will be followed by Barney and me on Saturday, February 9 at 6:00 p.m. Both of these shows, the gates open at 5:00, so I suggest that you get there early to get good seats. However, there is not a bad seat in our fabulous amphitheater. This show features award-winning Hal Linden, who's This show features award-winning Hal Linden, who starred in the classic TV show Barney Miller. He was also a great performer in his career on Broadway and many big spectacular shows, and he starred in the classic Barney Miller, as I said. Mr. Linden brings a genuine autobiography of his life to the stage that is clearly transformed into a captivating performance. Now, to get those tickets, where is my little notes? It is here. Once again, both Sinatra and Barney and me will be held at the ever-impressive Rancho Mirage Amphitheater. Please note, both shows are ticketed events, so be sure to purchase your tickets early. All seating is general, and there will be food and beverages offered by some of our outstanding local vendors available for your purchase. And that is a beautiful picture. It's an amazing, amazing facility. To purchase tickets and for more information, please visit Lamar Carr Desert Theatricals' website at www.deserttheatricals.com. I certainly look forward to these two exciting productions, as they are sure to impress us all, and I wish you all a very happy holiday season and see you next year. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Charlie. Can they get tickets through you?
Yes, you may, with a discount also. 10% off.
All right. Okay, a couple of final items before we get on to the business of the day. On Wednesday, last December 12, our Public Works Director, Jesse Eckenroth, and Project Manager, Charles Nesbit, attended the American Public Works Association 19th Annual Awards Luncheon to accept the best award for the Rancho Mirage Observatory project. The Best Awards, which stands for Building Excellence, Shaping Tomorrow, are given to the most outstanding projects each year in a variety of categories. The Observatory won the award in Building category of Southern California Regional Cities Population Less Than 50,000. This is the second award the city has been awarded through the APWA for this project. On June, or on October 1, 2018, the Observatory was received a Project of Merit Award by the Coachella Valley Branch of the Creative and Innovative category. We're extremely honored to serve or to receive these awards and become a wonderful addition to our community. For information, you can call the Observatory and find out more about tours or the library. Also, just one bit of news. This week, we received news that the Henry Winkler Concert will not be held on January 15. This is part of the Speaker Series event. Rest assured that the Speaker Series commissioners are working diligently to arrange a replacement speaker, and we will inform ticket holders of the replacement as soon as the issue is known. The city will issue refunds to those who no longer wish to receive the January 15 event. However, you may want to wait and see the replacement will be coming up in a short period of time. For more information, you can contact City Hall at 760-324-4511. And don't forget, we're still looking forward to Dr. Drew Bensky on February 26, and Elizabeth Vargas on March 26, and tickets are still available for these outstanding events. So that's all the notes. I just want to congratulate all of the council members for their great reports, keeping the people in Rancho Mirage well-informed, and again, wish you all a happy holiday season and a great 2019. This should be the best ever for our city. So now I'll move on to the minutes for the meeting of December 6, 2018. Can I have a motion to accept a minute?
I'll make that motion. Second?
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you very much. Just before we get on to the next item, I want to remind you all that the regular meeting of January 3 for the City Council has been canceled, and our first meeting for the month will be on the 17th of January. So mark your calendars, no meeting first part of January. You'll probably still all be out celebrating, so that's why we decided to cancel it. So now, we'll move on to the consent calendar, presented by Isaiah Higerman, city manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the City Council, you have six items on your consent calendar today for consideration. Item number one is to waive the full reading of all ordinances introduced or adopted pursuant to this agenda. Item number two is to adopt ordinance number 1142, approving development agreement case number DA 180003 pursuant to Chapter 17.56 of the Rancho Mirage Municipal Code, and this is related to the Carefield Senior Living Project. Item number three is the closure of our library and observatory during the Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival. The Rancho Mirage Writers' Festival is now in its sixth year and is not just known nationally but internationally for its excellence and is now considered one of the top writers' festivals around. So we close our library, but just as a reminder to all of our patrons, the online resources are still available, phone calls are still taken, emails are still responded to. So although the physical building is closed, we still are open in various other areas to serve our public. Item number four is the final acceptance of the DynaShore Pavement Project, and I'm going to hold off on showing any pictures since under Reports and Informational Items, our Public Works Director will be highlighting this project as part of that presentation. And again, this is the final acceptance of that project. Item number five, we have three special assistance funds awards to qualified nonprofits. And item number six are demands, and staff is here to answer any questions.
Thank you, Isaiah. Better than ever. Good job.
Thank you.
Are there any comments, questions from the consent calendar?
Nope.
Anybody in the audience would like to speak on the consent calendar? Here's your chance. Okay, all of you who want to know about Bob Hope and the paving out there. Okay, well, since there's no comments, how about a motion to accept the consent calendar?
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
One second, Ed.
So motion and a second. All vote, please.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll now move on to item number seven, and item number seven is the Public Works Department Update by Jesse Eckenroth, Director of Public Works. Jesse?
Thank you, Mayor, council members. In an effort to keep everyone up to date on projects throughout the city, the Public Works team has developed a slideshow highlighting some of the major projects that we've recently completed or are currently underway. So one of the first projects we want to highlight is the ADA ramp improvements. We recently went through and did 54 ramps throughout Highway 111 and Bob Hope. They were reconstructed to meet ADA standards. The newly constructed ramps have more gradual slopes than the previous ramps, and truncated domes are incorporated into the ramps to aid the visually impaired. The before-and-after pictures demonstrate a marked improvement in the ramp form as well as their function. The picture here is taken from City Hall, looking towards Highway 111. You can note the completely redesigned ramp configuration allows a more seamless transition from the street to the ramp, and it reduces the angle of the ramp as well. The design of these ramps were performed in-house by our Associate Engineer, Chet Khan. Each ramp was evaluated, measured, and if needed, completely redesigned with CAD software. This was done by our city engineering team, and doing the design in-house saved the city thousands of dollars. We didn't have to go out to bid for the design work on this project. And besides this project making the city safer and meeting the goals of our ADA Transition Plan, this project came in under budget. So we don't get to say that projects came in under budget a lot, but when we come to accept this project, I will probably note again that this project did come in under budget.
So you're going to take that, right?
Yeah, so we did come in under budget on this project.
Good.
Jesse, did you come under budget on this project?
Successfully came in under budget on this project. Thank you. The next slide is DynaShore Road Rehabilitation, and we just completed a one-mile road rehabilitation project on DynaShore between Bob Hope and Los Alamos. This was both westbound and eastbound. The project resurfaced the road using a recycling method. The majority of the existing asphalt is grounded, re-immulsified, and placed back down on the roadway with onsite equipment. The top inch and a half of asphalt is new rubber-infused asphalt that's produced at a batch plant, and the end result is the picture on the right of the fresh roadway. So on the left, you can see the grind marks on the edge. On the right is the finished product of the resurfaced roadway. So in addition to doing new asphalt, this project also incorporated two miles of additional bike lanes. The bike lanes run the entire length of the project and are marked according to Caltrans standards. And as you can see from the picture on the right, the bike lanes are even being used while we're trying to take a picture of the striping. So we went out there to take a picture of the striping. We fortunately happened to catch someone in the bike lanes. So they're being used already. This slide shows the under-construction picture while we're performing roadwork, and lane closures are already in place. We're taking advantage of the situation, and we are going to upgrade our ramps to new ADA standards. So the picture on the left is form work for a new ramp. The picture on the right is immediately after the ramp was poured, but before the truncated domes get epoxied onto the ramp. So this, all this design work that you're seeing was in-house by our engineering team, completed to ADA standards. So the ramp that's pictured on the left is the previous picture, and this is after the truncated domes are epoxy'd down. The ramp that's shown on the right is another ramp in the area. It's just an example of a finished ramp. So a total of six new ramps are brought to ADA standards as part of this roadway project. And again, this entire project was designed, drawn on AutoCAD, and managed by Leland Cole, our Senior Civil Engineer, and our in-house engineering team. So Dog Park enhancements. The Dog Park continues to be extremely popular and is well-received by the community. Keeping a dog park in tip-top shape definitely has its challenges. However, public staff work is committed to making this park, you know, continue to maintain that shape that it was in when it was built. So one recommendation that we had last year was from Dave Martin, our Facilities Manager, was to make a designated dig area. The dogs kept digging in a certain area, so he came up with the idea to do a concrete border and specified the area as a dog-dig area. So it's been very successful. The dogs love it, and the grass lives another day, so the grass is thankful for the dog-dig area as well. The picture on the right is some updated signage. We recently adopted an ordinance with some park rules. So there's updated signage throughout the park. Inside the park, there's some no smoking and no glass containers, but pretty comprehensive for the signage. It's all looking brand-new there. Another project that we have underway is our signal synchronization. The city's been coordinating with Cathedral City, with Palm Desert, and with Seavag to make this project successful for all agencies. The design award was given to Kimley Horn in July, and we should be wrapped up with substantial design work in January. So we plan to submit to Caltrans for funding approval for the construction phase immediately after design is completed, meaning this project could potentially be funded in order to start in late summer. So we're rapidly progressing towards completion of design work on this project as well. Frank Sinatra Bridge. The city continues to push this project through the extensive review process with CVWD and Caltrans. The city recently proposed a scope change for the addition of a pedestrian sidewalk on the south side of the bridge, and Caltrans gave us preliminary approval to submit a scope change request. In addition, Caltrans has submitted our application to the Federal Highway Administration to obtain funding for the right-of-way phase. So I will keep you posted as we progress through this project. And lastly, I think we all continue to be amazed at the response of the acclaimed Rancho Mirage Library and Observatory. As Mayor Kite mentioned, APA had a call for awards. Jeff Benson, our engineering technician, crafted an excellent submission package, and the observatory was selected in its category as the best. But quite frankly, I think it was the best of all categories awarded at the Southern California Public Works Awards, and it has been a privilege to be a part of this project. It was a privilege to be a part of this project. That concludes my update for today, but keep posted for future updates as we progress through our projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Excellent report. Dana, do you have a comment?
Yeah, I do. Jesse, can you go back to the photograph of the Frank Sinatra Bridge?
Pull that slide up. Okay, I can get there from here, guys.
There we go. Five years ago, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, and 20 years ago, the level of the sand in the viaduct here was always 10, 15, maybe even 20 feet below the top of the wash. I'm wondering, why is the wash now loaded with sand? Who's doing that? What's behind it? And what happens? I mean, that's going to reduce the amount of fluid that can go through there at any given time, and that distance, I don't know what the distance is actually, between the sand and the area where the cars will be, but it seems to me that this condition of sand that's accumulated there poses a serious threat of flooding to the homes and residences on both sides of the, of the entire project.
Sure, very fair question. So part of the project and the analysis that we go through is studying how the water flows before the project and after the project. So the fact that Frank Sinatra is a low-water crossing actually makes the sediment build up on the upstream side of it. It acts as a speed bump for the water, and it slows the sediment down, and the sediment builds up on the upstream side of it. So before we get into construction on this project, one of the most important aspects that we're considering is how the water and how the sediment is going to flow through the channel after the low-water crossing is removed and the new bridge is constructed. So as part of that, we go through a design with our consultants, our engineering consultants who specifically do hydraulic analysis. That goes through review with CVWD, and they send it to their consultants to review, number one, that the water's not going to go over the banks of the bridge, and number two, that the water's not going to run through the bridge so fast that it scours and it takes the sediment out that is under the bridge. So there's extensive review going on for modeling that, and that's part of the reason that we haven't got into construction, because we are still going through, to make sure that when the project is built, it's safe for the bridge and it's safe for the banks on the channel.
Is CVWD responsible for the content of the wash there, that dirt that's there? It had to be removed, or was determined that it should be removed?
CVWD maintains the channel. So they don't want anything built in their channel that's going to compromise their channel, and that's part of the reason why we go through such an extensive process.
Well, it seems to me that the accumulation of sand, about 10 feet or more of sand, interferes with the use and safety of the channel. I mean, doesn't it?
Well, when the new bridge is constructed, it should eliminate that. For right now, we do have that sidewalk that gets washed out from time to time, which we have to go in and, you know, remove the sand. I haven't seen where the banks have been have overflowed.
I have. I've seen where the banks have been, or the water has been within inches of the top.
Yeah, so one of the studies that we're doing right now is when we remove the low-water crossing, it's anticipated that the sand that's there, in the studies that we're modeling, it will come down because the low-water crossing's gone, and the elevation of the dirt over long-term, it's called long-term incision, that channel- long-term, it's called long-term incision, that channel bed will basically be able to go down further because that low-water crossing's been removed.
Well, you might pass on to CVWD that people are concerned. I know at least one person over on this side is very concerned, and the houses beyond there are all at the same elevation roughly as the houses that are right adjacent to the wash for the next several miles.
Yeah, some of the analysis that we go through is dealing with exactly that. So when we come to a consensus with CVWD on the design and what the wash bed's gonna look like, that's something that will be made known to the council before we proceed.
And it's one of the benefits of this project is, right now, because the roadway is basically across the floor of the wash, that causes the water to slow down and the dirt to build up now. And as part of this project, when the bridge actually gets built, they're actually gonna clear out a lot of that dirt so that they can build the base of the bridge where it needs to be built. And then, once the bridge is there, the water will flow more naturally, which means you won't have that buildup of dirt within the wash. So it'll naturally make the wash flow like it should before the roadway went on top of it. So the bridge will help with the buildup of the sediment.
Well, I remain skeptical.
Okay, I have a question. Is this unique to their particular area of the channel?
No, CVWD has, anytime you go through the channel, they're gonna have a hydraulic analysis that's gonna be required that studies the water and the scour for a bridge to go across. Now, and our bridge is new, so there's recently a widening of Date Palm, that's an existing bridge, existing condition. Our bridge is completely new. We're removing the low-water crossing, so criteria for our bridge is a little more strict.
I got you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. The report was very well done. Any guess as to when that bridge might be completed?
I told you.
How about when it's gonna be started?
While we're still on the council, or... I told you.
Let me get back to you on that, Richard.
Richard, that is my going question all the time. I drive crazy with that.
Okay, you can get back to Charlie, then.
Get back to me. I would like to say, congratulations on all the improvements, and especially the addition of the bicycle paths. Wonderful. Thank you.
Good job.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, any questions? Yes, Ted?
Jesse, the other day when we were chatting, I'd like you to repeat the story that you told me about, again, the ingenuity of the Public Works and the initiative that several people took it upon themselves. You know, we're a financially stable city. We get our money from transient occupancy tax and sales tax, but we're also financially stable because of where we save money. And you told me the story about how our water bill at the park was running high, and how several people took it upon themselves to investigate what the problem is. And I'd like you to share that because it just shows the dedication of the employees, and particularly in the Public Works area, which is probably our largest area, how vital that is. So, if you'd be so kind.
Sure, that's a good point. So we get probably, I don't know, somewhere in the realm of 40 to 50 water bills a month with everything that we have going on in our medians. Dave Martin, our facilities manager, goes through every one of those, and in one month, he noticed the amphitheater's bill was high. So he went out and investigated and found that the automatic flushers were what's called ghost scene, is when they flush when no one's in there. And so he went out and got quotes from a contractor, replace them from the automatic style to a manual so that they wouldn't ghost flush. And Noel Chikis, who was recently promoted at the holiday party, said, "You know what, Dave? We shouldn't go out to contract on that. I'll take it upon myself. I'll go get the parts, and I'll take Jesse Hernandez with me, and we'll go fix them." So we got a quote for, it was almost $8,000, and it was for most of it, it wasn't even for all of them. And Noel went and ordered the parts himself, and he and Jesse, I think in one day, replaced all the valves in the bathroom at the community park, something they didn't have to do. It was extra work for them. They have the liability now. If there's one that leaks or that's not working right, they have to go back and fix, right? They're on the hook for it. But they just took that upon themselves. It was first Dave being diligent with looking through the water bills, because those little things add up over time. Another project that we recently completed at the library was some of the light retrofits in the walkway. And some of those lights can be rather expensive, and I think it was upwards of $3,000 to replace some of the lights. And again, Noel said, "You know what? I have an idea." So he went and got a retrofit kind of structure in the bottom of the light where he can just screw an LED light bulb into it. So instead of spending $3,000 every time we have to replace the whole fixture, now we can just go grab LED light bulbs and screw them in. And that, again, was a, you know, one-day project they completed. And those are typical examples of what they do on a day-to-day basis.
Well, that's just great. And as I say, that contributes to our bottom line, and it shows the dedication of the employees. So I'm sure on behalf of everyone, we want to congratulate them for their ingenuity.
Thank you. We have a great team.
You certainly do. And I have one question, because I believe you mentioned that you've added an additional two miles of bicycle trails. And is that both on the street and behind the curb? And does that bring us up to 62 miles of bicycle trails?
So there are sidewalks behind curb, but we actually striped a six-foot shoulder on the curb, so it's marked for bike lanes. I'm not exactly sure the exact amount of bike lanes. I don't know if it's 62, but there was a full mile eastbound and a full mile westbound, and those are in addition to the sidewalks. The sidewalks remain, and the actual bike lane is striped and the roadway.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thanks again, Jesse. Good report. Okay, now we're gonna move on to the action items. Number eight is Resolution Number 2018-LB, next in order. Approving acceptance of the donation of an additional mineral specimen collection and 15 stone-carved birds offered by Joe and Gigi, Chi Chi, I'm sorry about that Chi Chi, Joe and Chi Chi Roberson. And Aaron Espinosa, our library director, is going to do the presentation. Aaron?
Great, thank you, Mayor. As the mayor said, today we are requesting the approval of Resolution 2018-LB, next in order. All right. The City of Ranch Mirage residents, Joe and Gigi Roberson, have amassed a significant private collection of rare rocks and minerals. The Robersons previously offered to donate to the Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory ownership rights to their collection, and on June 4, 2015, the Library Board approved a resolution accepting the collection, subject to the following: The collection is placed on the public display at the library for the period of 20 years commencing on September 1, 2015, through August 31, 2035; B, that no specimen contained in the collection shall be sold, donated, gifted, or otherwise disposed to anyone or any entity other than the legal heirs of the Robersons; and C, that a sign donated by the Joe and Gigi Roberson sign is prominently displayed in the library in the vicinity of the public display of the collection; and at D, that the library had to obtain its own written appraisal. As you can see from the screen, we have complied with all of those things. We have our own appraisal, and this collection has just been an amazing asset for our library. The collection, it's a valuable asset to the library in that it represents a unique educational opportunity for patrons of the library in the areas of mineralogy, gemology, geologically, geotechnology, and other natural sciences. Lectures pertaining to these sciences are now being scheduled for the spring. The Robersons, again, have generously offered to donate additional mineral specimen collections and an addition of 15 stone-carved birds to the library, a compilation of photographs, which is attached. These items would not be donated until the death of the Robersons. Donation of additional collections would be subject to similar conditions imposed in connection with their original donation. The two centring pieces on the left and right were of one 200-pound piece mineral that was butterflied into what you see today. The centring pieces were mined in Brazil. The quartz piece in the middle was mined in China and was the apple of Joe Roberson's eye, as he had never seen a piece so large. The mineral weighs over 350 pounds. These three minerals will be the largest to our collections once they are acquired. As previously mentioned, the Robersons are also donating 15 hand-carved stones, birds, to our collection, and they are a sight to be seen. Up on the screen, you will see just six of the birds that are to be donated. Each bird and/or birds is completely made up of several different minerals. You will also notice that each bird is sitting upon a beautiful mineral in itself. All the minerals from these birds were mined in Peru. Joe and Gigi acquired these donated materials shortly after their initial mineral collection donation to replace what they had already given to the city. After only a few months, Joe and Gigi both agreed that these minerals would complement the collection at the library and observatory immensely. Approval of the resolution by the Library Board would approve the acceptance of the additional collection and approve the amendment to the agreement attached to the resolution. Among the other things, the agreement provides that the Robersons shall take all actions to ensure that any will or trust agreement of the Robersons, including but not limited to the trust agreement which created, what was created, I'm sorry, the Roberson Living Trust on or about September 30, 200, I'm sorry, 1997, shall accurately reflect the intent, spirit, and provisions of the amendment so that by any heir, beneficiary, or successor in interest of the Robersons to the additional collection shall not dispute or in any manner place into question the terms of the amendment. I would like to acknowledge Mr. and Mrs. Roberson for their vision and willingness to donate a portion of their beautiful collection to the City of Ranch Mirage. Mr. and Mrs. Roberson could not join us today, but they wanted me to extend their appreciation to our city council and city manager for allowing them to share their passion with the community. I express our gratitude to them for their amazing contribution to our city. This concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Aaron. The pictures do not do justice to the actual display. It's an unbelievable display. Those of you who have not been to the library to view this spectacular, and we are so lucky to have the Robersons pick our library for the display of their very, very beautiful collection. Any other comments, questions?
I do. I have a question. Timeline on this, Aaron. Is all this given to the city? Are they ours? Are they in a trust that has a timeline of when they go back, or is it controlled by the trust or the family, or the City of Ranch Mirage?
The trust is for 20 years, so it will expire in 2035. I spoke with the executor of their trust just last week, and upon further discussions, they would like to continue that agreement. But that's in 2035, so we'll see where we're at at that time.
Very good. Thank you. Beautiful.
You know, in addition to going to the library and viewing the pieces, there's a great brochure that we put together just within the last month or so, and it highlights all of the various pieces that are at the library. So get the brochure, take it home, and it really will give you a good perspective of all the pieces that we have there.
Aaron and I were discussing this. We had lunch with Joe and Gigi, and just the nicest couple. And it was their passion, and they just wanted to share it with people. And, you know, it's a nice example of something that I think is very unique in Ranch Mirage. It's a great city, and throughout its history, there have always been those residents that have wanted to contribute to that greatness, and this is a great example of just somebody wanting to share something with the community in which they live, in which they enjoy living in, and it's there for everybody. And as part of our library, there's free access to that, and they just wanted to share their passion. So it's nice to see a resident support the city and our library in such a manner.
Beautiful.
Thank you. Any other questions? Is there anybody in the audience that has a question or comment? Okay, seeing none, can I have a motion on this item, please?
I will make the motion. And Steve, do I read it all, all the way through?
Please.
Yes.
Okeydoke. Here we go. The Board of Directors of the City of Ranch Mirage Library and Observatory approve Resolution Number 2018, next in order. One, approving acceptance of donation of additional mineral specimen collection and 15 stone-carved birds by Joe and Gigi Roberson. Two, approving amendment to mineral specimen donation agreement with Joe and Gigi Roberson. And three, authorizing its executive director to execute the same.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item number nine, which is Resolution Number 2018, next in order. Support of a memorandum of understanding between the County of Imperial and the County of Riverside regarding the Salt and Sea. Management Analyst, Tiana Makamoon. Do it every time, don't I? Makamoon. Okay. Tiana will give the background on this resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item I will be discussing today is a resolution in support of the memorandum of understanding between the County of Imperial and County of Riverside regarding the Salt and Sea. The MOU represents the desire of both counties to work together in a collaborative manner and to take coordinative action to further stabilize the Salt and Sea, which would protect and improve public health, air quality, and wildlife habitat. There is no binding or financial commitment in support of this resolution. The MOU is solely in recognition that cooperation between stakeholders affected by the Salt and Sea is paramount to solving its complex challenges. Here to talk more about the resolution and plans for the Salt and Sea is Phil Rosentrader, Executive Director of the Salt and Sea Authority.
Mr. Mayor, members of the councils, a pleasure to be here today. I'm struck by the civility, the professionalism of this group, the way you focus on the uplifting and the positive relentlessly throughout your program. A lot of other councils and governments around California and the United States could learn a lot from this group. Thank you for your manner in which you lead. And it's that civility, that spirit of cooperation among people who hold common interests what brings me here today as the Executive Director for the Salt and Sea Authority. Salt and Sea Authority is a joint powers authority created in 1993 to bring together the local governments that have jurisdiction around the sea and need to work cooperatively with the state of California and the other large landowner with public trust responsibilities of federal government in order to have an achievable restoration revitalization plan. That's taken a long time, and it's really gotten, spent a lot of money at the state level, and achieved very little on the ground. But I'm here to tell you today, great strides are being achieved at Salt and Sea now. In this past year, we actually achieved the Salt and Sea Authority under contract with the state of California, delivered the very first state-funded project ever completed at the Salt and Sea, on time, on budget, Councilman Townsend. And we have done so previously under contract with the state of California with the Financial Feasibility Action Plan, which amassed the various proposals over the years into a condensed version of what locals consider to be achievable. And with that, also brought along a set of plans, financial strategies that had never been brought forward on how one might pay for that and sustain it, financially sustain it. That strategy requires a configuration and investment of these state monies and federal monies in a way that brings more benefit to the Salt and Sea beyond the simple, do as little as possible and get out of town. That's been the strategy and the approach observed by the locals, observing that the state plan up until now. Our interests with the Riverside County and Imperial County folks, those are members of the Salt and Sea Authority, the two land use jurisdictions, along with the two Colorado River Water Importing Agencies, Coachella Valley Water District and Imperial Irrigation District, and major landowners of Torres Martinez Tribe. That comprises the governing body of the Salt and Sea Authority. The realization's been, if we're going to have an investment of public monies around the Salt and Sea that accomplishes the state's objective to protect human health and preserve habitat, let's do it in a way that also brings additional benefit. One of the things that's impressed me here today, yes, everyone goes around, they're... One of the things that's impressed me here today, yes, everyone goes around, they're does their business, but there seems to be a prevailing attitude that let's try to do what's best in this city. And we want to do the same thing at the Salton Sea. We want to have an infrastructure investment to Salton Sea that does more than just protect the human health from dust and preserve habitat. Let's have a revitalized economy as a result of that investment, and that investment of a levy system that creates an impound of water for a perimeter lake is how we go about doing that. Where does one begin to actually plan out? One of our speakers earlier today said, "We want to have a healthy and prosperous new year." By the way, that is our motto at the Salton Sea. We want to have a healthy and prosperous Salton Sea at the end of all this. We begin by planning together. If we begin with the land use planning agencies that are members of the Salton Sea Authority, agreeing that if we're going to have that kind of infrastructure project, it has to begin with agreements between the agencies that have responsibility to work together to do cooperative land use planning so that at the end of the day, we have a levy that looks like this rather than that or that. And we have a stable elevation at the seashore that revitalizes and re-energizes those marina communities that we're looking to protect, number one, but also bring them back economically. Sales tax and TOT was mentioned as a revenue stream for this city. Those are real streams if you are careful as stewards of your resources. You invest in a way that you can enhance that kind of revenue stream. That's the strategy we're talking about at Salton Sea, not simply cover the playa, create some habitat, and walk away. Now, let's do that, but do it in a way that we have multiple benefits for that return on investment. Let's do it in a way we create a perimeter lake, and we start that process that Riverside County Supervisor Manuel Perez has taken the initiative to reach out to the counterparts of Imperial County to create an MOU that brings these two counties together in agreement, consistent with the plans that are being developed with the Salton Sea Authority in cooperation with the state of California and the federal government. So I respectfully ask for your aye vote in support of this resolution, that we may continue to reinforce the local presence and the local priorities with the project that makes sense with multiple benefits benefiting the entire Coachella Valley and the state of California and the federal government. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
You know, I'm very happy that you laid this out because a lot of people think it's just Sacramento saying, "We don't care." But when you lay out how many fingers are in this and how everybody has to work together, it's an amazing thing that you're accomplishing what you're accomplishing, and I congratulate you on that.
Thank you, sir. We cannot do it without the kind of cooperation that is embodied by the members of this board.
Any other questions, comments? Iris?
I have a question. When I came on the council over seven years ago, many, many, many studies had already been done. I'm glad to see that you've reached the point where we all feel confident that a lot of the safety issues are going to be addressed, especially with the air pollution. Do you have many more studies that are going to be conducted?
Ma'am, respectfully, study is not a word I allow to be used in the office. It's banned. It makes me cringe because at the end of the day, we've studied this ad nauseam. It's time for action. We have plenty of information. We have solid plans at this point. That perimeter lake I referred to that is drafted in conceptual design in the Financial Feasibility Action Plan from several years ago when Supervisor Benoit was in the position that now is occupied by Manuel Perez, that was taken up to the Department of Water Resources for review. The Division of Engineering went through this with a fine tooth comb. They had 186 different detailed questions, you could imagine, Mr. Jackenworth. They asked hard questions. We answered them all to the best of our ability, yet at the end of that conversation, they said, "We have no further questions. We have no concerns," to which I replied, "Does that mean you consider this to be feasible from a technical and an engineering standpoint? I'm thinking we're done with our studies, right?" They replied, "Well, there are other portions of the sea that still need to come into alignment with this, but yeah, we consider this to be ready to go." I said, "Well, can I get that in writing?"
Okay.
He said, "Well, we'll get back to you on that." I share your concern about action and timelines and performance. That is why the Salton Sea Authority is the only entity you will find in recent history. In fact, we've searched the archives for the phrase "on time, on budget" can't be found unless you look at the Salton Sea Authority in recent years. So we have a track record of performing. We want to see projects. We understand that is a priority for the locals, and how do we get that done? We get it done by working together cooperatively and laying out those projects so that they can actually be achieved.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Excuse me. I went to the Salton Sea in 1956. Hopefully, one of these days, they'll be able to look back and say, "This is what it used to be, but here it is today, just as good as it was 50 years ago."
To that point, Mr. Mayor, that is the intent of the perimeter lake. There will be less water that flows into the sea, but there are still substantial quantities, and we need to do what we can to be responsible stewards of that resource so we have maximum return. That sea was at one time the number one recreational destination in the state of California, exceeding 70,000 number of annual visitors. That wasn't fantasy, it's not hyperbole, that's fact. We would like to exercise that attractive asset and those resources that we still have for a configuration that it does exactly that, Mr. Mayor, harnesses that opportunity.
Is there any likelihood that with him leaving office, that Governor Brown might be able to become a potent voice for this project? Or has he not shown enough interest in it perhaps? But if he has, it seems to me that his voice could be helpful.
We actually had a meeting with we, the members of the Salton Sea Authority Elected Board of Directors, about two years ago, in offices for Governor Brown for the first time. We were unsuccessful getting the governor to come down to this location, but he did create a task force that has been cooperating and focused on the Salton Sea. I would love to see what you're describing. We're also working with the new administration to ensure that they are aware of this opportunity and that they see it as an opportunity for transformative change, not just a Band-Aid fix and get out of town, but an opportunity to do more than the minimalist approach that covers the California liabilities under the Water Arrangement QSA. We want to see a revitalized economy, and we want to see that return of tourism. We want to see that TOT start to flow and the sales tax and the property values rise so that there's a greater resource by which we might maintain and expand a healthy, prosperous Salton Sea, not just for this year, but for all years to come.
In the event you have the time or inclination, Governor Brown is going to be at the Rancho Mirage Writers Festival on January 31st or February 1st, and he'll be wandering in the crowd, and he's part of the program, but he would be easy to reach if you're there and you put a chokehold on him.
I'm sure I can find the time. I'm certainly inclined.
Any other comments, questions? Thanks for being here today. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your consideration.
Good luck. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Okay, coming back to council, any further questions of staff? Tiana, great job.
Thank you.
All right, can I have a motion, please, on item number nine?
All right, I will make the motion. That the City Council adopt Resolution Number 2018, next in order, in support of the memorandum of understanding between the County of Imperial and the County of Riverside regarding the Salton Sea.
Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Iris. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you. We'll now move on to item number 10, which is a joint Resolution Number 2018, next in order, approving a grant management policy. And today, the presentation will be done by Kofi Otoban, Director of Administrative Services. Kofi?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The item before you this afternoon for consideration is grant management policy for the city and its affiliated agencies. The city and its affiliated agencies use grants to support programs, services, and capital improvement projects whenever possible. These grants are provided by federal, state, and other agencies or private organizations, and often comes with requirements that applies to operations and compliance. The Office of Management and Budget, commonly referred to as OMB, which basically oversees the United States federal budget and performance of federal agencies, in December 2000, December, on December 20, December 2014, implemented Title II U.S. Code of Federal Regulations Part 200 Uniform Administrative Requirements, Cost Principles, and Audit Requirements for Federal Awards, which is generally referred to as the Uniform Guidance. Among other things, the Uniform Guidance requires the adoption of a grant management policy by entities receiving federal grants. The purpose of this grant is to set forth an overall framework for guiding the application, use, and management of grant resources by the city and its affiliated agencies, and also to be in compliance with the Uniform Guidance. The grant management policy, which is attached on page 10-7 of the agenda packet, has been prepared in accordance with this, with the Uniform Guidance, and staff recommends approval of this policy by the City Council and its affiliated agencies. And that concludes my staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Kofi. Anybody have any questions, comments this side? Down this way. Nobody right or left? Anybody in the audience would like to make a comment or have a question on this item? Seeing none, we'll then go to the council for a vote or a motion, please?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that the City Council and Board of Directors of the city affiliated agencies approve Joint Resolution Number 2018, next in order, approving a grant management policy.
Thank you, Ted. Can I have a second?
Second.
Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, we'll now move on to item number 11, which is a contract with Hyder and Company for property management services and the addition of a housing administrative analyst staff position. And this will be discussed today by Marcus Solomon, the housing manager. Marcus?
Good afternoon, Honorable Chair Kite, members of the Housing Authority Board and city staff. The City of Rancho Mirage Housing Authority owns and maintains floor 55 and over affordable housing properties and contracts the services of a property management company to oversee daily operations and provide residents a resource for issues and concerns that may arise. After completing a request for proposals, the Housing Authority Board approved a contract for the property management services with Wynn Residential. Unfortunately, Wynn Residential could not meet the city's insurance requirements and was therefore determined unresponsive. The next qualified bidder is Hyder and Company, our current property management company. A meeting was held with Hyder where staff clearly communicated several key deficiencies with the current level of service being provided. Several examples are included in the staff report. To meet our expectations and alleviate deficiencies, Hyder is proposing a dedicated regional manager who will solely oversee the Rancho Mirage properties. Additionally, the onsite manager at San Estadio Villas will be brought to full time from the current part-time. The managerial movements are included in the budget as proposed by Hyder. Staff believes this will aid in resolving the outstanding issues. However, staff also included a provision of cancellation of services in the event these additions do not result in the anticipated increase in level of service. Additionally, to ensure the quality of service, regardless of the property management company in place, staff concluded that the addition of a housing administrative analyst would best meet our needs. The analyst, if approved, would work directly with property management staff to address day-to-day property-related issues, assist in coordinating activities, complete property-specific newsletters and surveys, and others duties as needed. The addition of an analyst would allow the housing manager to focus on a broader scope of housing matters. While the city contracts for property management services, ultimately, the responsibility of ensuring a high degree of customer service falls directly on the city. It is recommended that the Housing Authority Board approve a six-month probationary contract with Hyder and Company and approve the addition of a housing administrative analyst. Thank you for your time. I'm available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Marcus. Appreciate the report. Very well done. Is there anybody here who has a question regarding either the contract or the new individual to be hired to fill that need?
You know, I just want to say one thing, that it's not business as usual. There are many changes that this staff has worked on to make sure that this runs smoothly. And anybody else want to, Isaiah, you want to talk about a little more of how you brought that decision forward to make sure that it's not, and I'll say it again, it's not the same same that we're really working with.
Sure. You know, I think when we went through this process, one of the things that staff with the aid of our subcommittee as well is we had to take a very real look at the deficiencies. And there were absolutely deficiencies in the current level of service that were unacceptable to the city. And when we were faced with Wynn Residential not being able to meet our insurance requirements, they were just conditions that we could not accept, and we couldn't jeopardize the Housing Authority in such a manner. So when we looked at who's second best was, it was our current provider. So we really had to go back with Hyder, and we went all the way to the president of that company, and we had numerous meetings to discuss what we identified were the deficiencies that were unacceptable to the city for the level of care and attention to detail that we expect at those properties. So I think what we ended on is kind of a thoughtful analysis of going through and admitting where we fell short and seeing what would work well. And if I could kind of summarize where I think we're landing, you know, when we had RDAs, we had the 20% set aside, and there was a lot of money flowing into this account. When we lost that by the state of California, you know, we were first in all internal process, and then we went to pretty much an all external process. And I think what you're seeing today is more of a hybrid approach. So we've learned what works well to be contracted out and what doesn't work well to be contracted out. And so the key component for me and for staff was the addition of a city staff member. And ultimately, the responsibility falls on the city, and there are properties, and we're always going to be a community that is very responsive to our residents and the issues that they're facing that impact their quality of life. And I think what this position does is it allows us to keep that customer service in-house, and it gives us a position that can be active in these properties on a daily basis and also do some unique things that we haven't done before, like monthly newsletters to each property about, hey, what's going on, what's coming up? And then also do some surveys of the residents that live in those properties about how they feel and maybe what's a cool addition that we can add to the properties. So this position will give the city more resources in an area of customer service and quality of life for our residents that are living in these properties.
Hey, thank you. I think those of us who were on the subcommittee looking at the future of Hyder really understand some of the issues a little more than we did and how we can solve them. And I think it's really important to have this administrative analyst on staff because they can really fill in between Hyder and our administrative people and make sure the housing developments are first class. There's no reason that we should have any problems with the people that we have, and hopefully, we'll have even better people in the future. So it's really key to have that individual that can look at what Hyder is providing us and making sure it's appropriate.
Yeah, and if I could just add one more thing that I failed to mention is, one of the things that staff really appreciates is the residents in these properties keep us informed on what's going on, and that is a valuable tool and piece of information for the city. So we definitely appreciate the feedback that we get from our residents.
Any questions, comments down here?
I think it's a great opportunity, and it just shows that how this staff, that we are so fortunate in this city, really look into things. When things go wrong, they are right there to correct it, and I commend you all for that. Thank you.
Any questions down here, comments?
My only comment is that not only My only comment is that not only should this be a much more fine-tuned operation in every respect, but the fact that the first-year annual savings of $162,333 is an additional bonus that will come out of this and will be more hands-on, and I compliment the staff and subcommittee for making this happen.
And I would also like to note for the council, staff will be doing quarterly updates to the city council as we progress through this next period of time so that we can report to the council and the public how this new process is working.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who would like to ask a question regarding this? Would you like to come forward?
For those of you who don't know me, I'm Marilyn Arcoli Arcaroli, and I am a resident of Santa Rosa. I was a resident of San Jacinto, and I'm proud to be a resident of the City of Rancho Mirage. Most of us living there in the senior affordable housing are there because of things that happened in our past. I was always a homeowner. I lived in Laguna. I lived in San Juan Capistrano. My dad was a builder. He lived out here. I never rented. I never rented until I became a renter in the City of Rancho Mirage in San Jacinto. I am proud of where I live. I take the condition of my home inside and outside as I would as if I owned it. So because I'm a renter, it does not mean I don't care. I care very much about the way it looks, the way it's kept up, the way I'm perceived. I care about the way my car looks because I think it's a reflection on how I take care of myself and my home. I feel the same way about my house, my house in San Jacinto, and in San, excuse me, in Santa Rosa. Marcus, you talked about the requirements for the position. I want you to know, folks, that there are some of us here that would do exactly what you're talking about. I think that we would like to be part of your team. In other words, if you need people to put on an event, if you need people to help with decorations, if you need people to say, "Okay, there's a branch that has gone down across the roadway," or "There are cracks in the roadway," we are there to do that. My friends, the fellow residents in both communities, I'm sorry, I don't know really people in Whispering Waters or the other one, but we care very much, and we're very grateful for what you've given us. We didn't see ourselves living in affordable housing years ago, but there are times when the wind gets knocked out of you and your feet get kicked out from underneath you. I'm not feeling sorry for myself. I'm feeling grateful. I'm feeling grateful to every one of you for the beautiful home that you have provided me, and you have made it able for me to have a wonderful retirement and a wonderful golden years, and I thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and greetings to the whole council and staff. I feel like I know many of you very well. My name is Mary Lou Suter, and I'm a resident at number 11 Juniper Lane in Rancho Mirage, which is Rancho Mirage Senior Housing as well. And I just want to express my sincere gratitude to all of you. You keep your eye on the ball, and I'm grateful for that. And that's not just the financial numbers, which are so important because Rancho Mirage wouldn't be what it is if you didn't do that, but also the soft and fuzzy pieces of life that matter so much to all of us, whether we recognize that often or not. So for my quality of life, I'm grateful. I am grateful for your openness and your willingness to step out and explain things when we might not understand. So for all that, just thank you sincerely. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Lou. Anybody else have a comment or a question? Okay, we'll come back to the council for a motion, please.
All right, Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that the Housing Authority Board approve a six-month probationary contract with Hyder and Company and approve the addition of a housing administrative analyst.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Okay, thank you, Marcus. Did a good job on the report. We'll now move on to the last item of the day. This is item number 12, the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Rancho Mirage and the Rancho Mirage Employees Association. This will be handled by Isaiah Hagerman, our city manager. Isaiah?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, attached to the staff report is a full copy of the Memorandum of Understanding, and that summarizes the terms and agreements that were agreed to by the Rancho Mirage Employees Association, RMEA, and the city. And it is a proposed three-year agreement that would expire December 31st, 2021. And negotiations with RMEA started in August of 2018, and the provisions that were negotiated were approved by the majority of RMEA's membership. And so now, the proposed MOU is before the council for consideration. So the recommendation is that the City Council approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Rancho Mirage and Rancho Mirage Employees Association as attached to the staff report, and authorize the mayor and the city manager to execute that agreement on behalf of the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Isaiah. Any questions, comments from council? Comments?
Well, I know that it's been a long road, and it was handled well. I think Isaiah and his group have done a wonderful job with it.
Yeah, I think both groups really came together when they had to and found that this was really the best program, not only for the city but for the employees. So look forward to three years of quiet, known negotiations. Look forward to the future. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah.
Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none?
Okay, I will make the motion.
Okay.
Okay, I move that the city council approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the City of Rancho Mirage and the Rancho Mirage Employees Association as attached to the staff report.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Please vote.
And motion carries five zero.
Okay, congratulations. Congratulations to RMEA. And that was the last item of the day, so we'll move on to closed session, and Steve Quintanilla, city attorney, will present those items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council is now going to recess into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9 regarding one significant exposure to litigation item and two existing litigation items. The first one is Veronica Juarez versus City of Rancho Mirage, and the other one is New Circular Wireless DBA AT&amp;T Mobility versus City of Rancho Mirage. Number four.
Yes.
Number four, we had a conference with our labor negotiator pursuant to Government Code Section 54957.6 regarding the Rancho Mirage Employees Association.
Okay. Thank you, Steve, and we will recess now into closed session.